Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Welcome to the 25th General Session. This is an invite for my best friend. Please stand.
... Dear Lord, we so need your guidance as we stand here today. Bless this gathering with a divine elegance and help us to make the best of our strong life. Please be sure that you're strong as today to help us decide where to begin. Guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech. With our differences, may we be kind. In our agreements, may we should uphold that those who are in our work must stay in faith with the Spirit of our goodness. Lord, at the end of the day, may you feel a sense of peace and happiness for the opportunity to work and serve our brothers and sisters in this day.
So I don't want to be a new person in the world. I don't want to be a person in the world who has to be a woman. You want to be a man, you want to be a woman. So I don't want to be a woman in a city. So I don't want to be a person in a city who has to be a woman. May I not to die in a city that has a crack in it? I'm a person who has to die in a city that has a crack in it. I'm a person who has to die in a city that has a crack in it. You want to be a man, you want to be a woman. You want to be a person in a city who has a crack in it. I'm a person who has to die in a city that has a crack in it.
Mr. Chair, thank you for the chair. I'll turn to everyone for the 25th General Session. I'm part of Malai. Donabul, Carlos, and Kawali. Have you remember the Riti Kaisutat? Have you remember Loy, B, Mami? Have you remember the Nilo G, Dila Santos? Have you remember Meelid, Aigwa? Have you remember Nikki, M, Kahili? Have you remember the TC, Pagsugiro? Have you remember Juntel, Al Flores? Have you remember Ralph, Ito Loza? And have you remember Kristin, Hobbie, Pagsugiro? We have three persons, this is chair, we have a forum. Yes, Mr. Chair. Adoption, this is chair. Adoption, the minutes of the session. Yes, you're organized. Good afternoon, all of you. Good afternoon, all of Malai community. Good afternoon, all of our media today and our guests. Mr. Chair, I move for the adoption of the reading of previous minutes. Great. As soon as the rest of the session for the reading of previous minutes. There have been corrections, clarifications of previous minutes. Before the forum. Yes, another one of zero, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The chairman of the past year. I have questions on page 35, Mr. Chair.
Which define, define right?
35. Line 1597. 1597. I'd like to say this word, the lady would be in. After the word, after it. So very does so. Water sports, after it is offered like a medallion, so do this word. And, Mr. Chair, I'd like to... Inform was... It's a target. But because I noticed that... Other small words like "tiketiket" cannot read exactly, so... Before the finality of previous minutes, the word should be, must be properly arranged. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you for the clarification, Mr. Chair. Are there clarifications of previous minutes? Mr. Chair. Yes, another one of the... Mr. Chair, I move that the previous minutes be adopted and approved with corrections. And if there's any correction about it, we will give the opportunity to pass the correction to the superior. Yes, thank you, another one of the... Yes, for this, the previous minutes approved. We have some procedure, we have some correction, some need of... Our business, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have gift to the, Mr. Chair, Dr. Dennis Kabular. Good afternoon, for a courtesy call to the Malai buyer, our appointed Malai college president. Okay, welcome, Dr. Dennis Kabular. The new hire of Malai College and the business leader. Are you opposite your... Professional, Mr. Kabular, Dr. Kabular?
Yes, sir. My uncle, with all the local members of the municipal office. My brother. Of course, my country also in the standard of Malai community officials. Basically, the municipal mayor. He is a Malai community replacement and the authority of the board of directors. Of course, being chosen. Appointed as municipal government assistant department head. And finally designated president of Malai College. Can I be allowed to... I'd like to start introducing myself and my family. I am Dr. James Torres Kabular. I think at this point, I may allow to speak in Kati Plan, sometimes in Malayanon. To prove that indeed I am in Kati Plan in Malayanon. So I am the... The name is Kabular, Kati Plan. The name is Kabular, Kati Plan. My grandmother, the... The sister Kabular, she must hold. My grandfather is the first to marry in Kati Plan. And second to the radio station there, just beside the airport. That was during the Second World War. So up to the contemporary period, so after the Second World War. My grandmother is Fidi Gregorio Torres. Gregorio Torres. My father is Blanier Torres, who is a family of there in Antun. There in Margao, Sagiray. Spread down all over, almost all American. There in Antiqui, there in Sibu, there in Nigros, there in... There in Cirexia, and other places in Philippines. My grandmother is Gregorio, my sister Gregorio. The only daughter of then-Grothia Gregorio. Who is from Malai. There in... My sister, my sister's brother's son, Burakai. At that time, I was born rather in... Si Tumakulot. If you know the place, there is a... The country, there is a highway, a central highway, just about 10 kilometers away, there in... So during my elementary days, there I went to school in Kati Plan. There in Kalusug, the village, when going to school, the school was very bad. And... So I went to school there. I went to study there. Any business, not to be great, just to survive, just to finish for my elementary education. I had my elementary education in Kati Plan Elementary School. My high school education in Unyon, then-Unyon barangay High School. I graduated there in 1973. And my college, the Northwestern Science College in Kamiaklan. In the degree of Bachelor of Science in Agriculture. Major in Agrology and junior in Bachelor of Science in Education. After college, last 1980, I had application in Puerto Tenses City. When I got the opportunity, I passed it, I took it soon. And was immediately employed at the Department of Agriculture. And while working at that particular department, I took a master's in public administration at the Palawan Teachers College today University during weekend. I earned units also in master's in education and supervision at the Holy Trinity College, which is also university today, so I am also instrumental to the transformation of the college into university. With much persuasion from the college administrator, or the college president, being a college professor then, since 1993, I pursued to higher studies, postgraduate studies, until I finally graduated in the degree of Bachelor of Doctor of Philosophy in Education with major in educational management. Our professors then were coming from Manila, from the EUT, Ateneo, and Delasal University. I worked with qualified professors at that time, in the college. And because of about two decades working with six expert rein, or four rein, and five local consultants, I was motivated to take a consultancy course at the University of the Philippines, in Delaman, present city. I also took short management and administrative courses at the University of the Philippines, Los Banios, and Delaman, the University of Asia in the Pacific, and the Development Academy of the Philippines. So many short courses at the Development Academy of the Philippines, in Tagaytay, city. I was then also afforded opportunity to participate in an observation tour and short term in those sessions at the University of Queensland and Brisbane, Australia, and Hope's Holy College in Richmond, New South Wales, Australia, before at least 10 days of stopover this evening. Of course, in the span of time, I attended several readings, seminars, conferences, and workshops. As to my own experiences, I was first employed at Akorni Allen Screen Co's private company, Kalibu, after my graduation, without the company, Aklan, Rumblon, and industrial corporation. I was also a substitute teacher at then-Unyon barangay High School. And when I made graduate in Palawan, I worked at the Department of Agriculture for about 15 long years, 15 years in provincial government of Palawan. If I was not devoted, or without implementation of the local government code of... Of local government code of the Philippines, or Republic of City 160, I should have been appointed as regional director of the Department of Agriculture, Region 4. The one of Region 4 A and B at that time. But fortunately, my staff and my colleagues were also appointed. They were appointed as regional director, and my superiors were also appointed as assistant regional director. Of course, I retired as assistant provincial agricultureist last 2008. But because of too much bureaucracy, I was especially on the part of the local executive, I just landed as assistant department head. I should have been the provincial agricultureist or provincial cooperative development officer before 1995. I was designated, among others, as the head of the provincial planning and management staff for both regular and spatial projects. Among spatial projects, I... Palawan Integrated Area Development Project Phase 1, and second, Palawan Integrated Area Development Project or Phase 2, which is funded by the Asian Development Fund and the European Economic Community, and of course, with counterpart from the government of the Philippines. Also, as the provincial board security czar or overseer, the project management office coordinator of spatial projects consultant. Because we have selected consultants at that time, so I took the responsibility to take the lead in the coordination function. Farm caster, we have particular radio programs at that time, there is a Malayanon everyday program. The Palawan Radio and the ADS City Radio. I will achieve the technical and institutional support services, the management information system, and permanent member of the Palawan Executive Environmental Committee, which is a policymaking body of the Palawan Council for Sustainable Development. And this office is directly under the office of the president of the public of the Philippines. This is a very important committee that I'm being in for, not the head, about retirement. And I would like in fact to share my knowledge, expertise on environmental concerns. I also became college or university professor of graduate studies. I have post-graduate studies at the Holy Trinity University for about 15 years, and a college instructor at the Palawan Cultural College for three years. I was designated also as department head of graduate studies, master's in public administration. I became a director also of the Cooperative Bank of Palawan due to my primary operatives colleagues, being the leader China and the director of the different primary operatives of Palawan. I was a founder and resident of the Aklan, the Palawan Association, a executive director of an environmental foundation, and other so many non-government organizations in Palawan. I also served as a technical consultant of the provincial board, particularly the appropriation committee that is at that time, did you have a balance, um, in asan, proceeds, Palawan, from 2500 pesos. But more often, we receive financial assistance, like the car rental, and things like that. At the time, the decision proceeding at the regional trial court, and it is important about the sharing of the proceeds from all of the Malampalang operations. I also served as a consultant of some indigenous and traditional group bases. Also as a resource person in the different ways all over Palawan and seclusion in some universities, especially in then-Palawan National Cultural College, and today the Western Philippines University. So every time I graduated, and that, they subjected the students for a forum, for seclusion. And I was invited to speak in career development, planning, and improvement or development. Before the decision was made for me to transfer my residency in my hometown, in Malai, and of course, in Kati Plan, I was offered the position of become post-director of Palawan State University in northern part of Palawan. Unfortunately, I declined the position because it is very far, about 200 kilometers away from the city. I'm here in the heart of the city, but it's very far from the outtakes of Palawan State University. I was also offered a senior officer in an executive agency in Manila, particularly in Malacanayan, as highly recommended by the present administration leaders in Puerto Tenses City and in Palawan, of course, in Manila. When I went back to Kati Plan in Malai, I served as a consultant of Iha in TC, Burakai Island, helping administer multi-purpose cooperative, and I love the Burakai. Then present, of course, as designated president of Malai College, which I would like to express my gratitude to all of you. As to my awards and achievements, simply modesty aside, and to break the state of humility that imposed upon myself, I maintain my status as first owner and valedictorian in elementary and high school, and academic scholar, and home lawyer in graduate college, and also awarded the award of merit and excellence in college also. And with high academic ratings in my master's in doctorate of B, and a consultancy course that I took in the University of the Philippines, in Pal, I took the bachelor's at the time at the University of the Philippines. I was also awarded as the most outstanding employee of the Department of Agriculture in the province of Palawan, and the most outstanding employee in planning and management services for the Department of Agriculture in Region 4, regional level. So at that point, I would like to express again my thanks to all of you. Perhaps I can share maybe later about the status of Malai College, and the problems that we are confronting, you know. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Dennis Kabular. In the... What about that? Another one, for the... As Malai College and... Yes, another one, of the room?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was really a miss listening to the, to Dennis, Mr. Dennis Kabular. Well, in fact, I could still remember when I was young also, 264, one year in Kati Plan. The most pinata player to say it is. But this guy, I know him very, very well, not very much. He served with regards to his educational program at that time. And I'm glad that I'm here. But then he know, not to be the most lucky in Malai. That's why we came back in Malai. The first time we met here. So anyway, Mr. Chair, visiting to the experience or the statement shared to us by Mr. Kabular, separate from what comes to his achievements and accomplishment, I think there's no doubt, you know, he can manage the Malai College. But what I can ask only for Mr. Kabular, if you can provide us your training documentation, regards to your achievements, accomplishment, everything that you mentioned in your presentation, for us to at least, for them to have a reference, to give a submit to us. And I do hope that you being the contact of the Malai College, that the success of the Malai College will depend on you now, you know. So congratulations, and thanks, Mr. Chair, I'd like to congratulate because Mr. Dennis Kabular is a Malayanon, I don't know, and I'm happy to be one of the contact of the Malai College, Mr. Chair. So thank you, Bill, thank you.
Thank you, another one, other? Yes, another one, you're organized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon to my colleagues and guests and... Mr. Yopis, and the first person, Dr. Dennis Kabular. Thank you very much for coming here. You know, your... It's such an impressive, they should make your... What you presented here, and really, it's really impressive, and we hope your background in the academy is so vast, you know, it's you've been everywhere, and it's a... We've been looking forward to a college better than this. We hope our Malai will... I'm sure you have your own vision of how you will be planning the Malai College. We just saw the... At that time, I was available to send a focus. So I have not... Although it's not part of your expertise, you know, in... But you'll be running the school anyway, so as long as you can have somebody, a focus, but we should... I don't know if we already have a person also from Malai.
I see you are from hospitality industry. I see you are... Malayanon have full of... Many people, many cars, many buildings, many... Subdivision, shared by all, of course, pinaka-excellent. Thank you very much. I'm sorry, you're supposed to be retired already, but... In your heart, I think you found it, you removed your building, so I think you are going to have a good life in Malayanon. But you're not in Antun, you're from Malayanon. Thank you very much. And it's an honor, you know, to be with you, Dr. Dennis Kabular, thank you very much.
Yes, another one of the... Other, members of the council? Before we proceed, your college president, out of his field, in your Carlos Kawali, right? Yes, other, please? Another one, for the... Dr. Dennis Kabular? Okay, I don't know, Dr. Kabular, from Dennis, my family are in Kati Plan, you know? I'm proud of Kati Plan, but proud of Malayanon, you know? I'm glad you are from Malayanon. Malayanon, Malayanon, 20 years' dream of the Malayanon. 20 years, 2000, around 2000, that's right. It's been over. And now, it's been... As for my experience in Dennis, in Malayanon, in Malai, to restore the quality of Malayanon. It's a very long known experience, uh, in terms of, uh, to handle, uh, some NGOs or government, uh, uh, agencies. At it, uh, the dream of Malayanon is the Malaya College, no? Biglang mahirap, pero at it na, nakita natin na, almost nineties, ninety-five century, the opening of September, yeah? So, uh, si, kung Dennis, eh, man, eh, the next experience, ay, uh, uh, mabulikan, ina napasok, uh, to the Malaya College. Not only Mr. Kabular, but in the, uh, Malayanon, and also the elected official of Malaya. Uh, so, to, no? I hope, uh, Mr. Kabular is open to Malayanon, to Dennis, and is still proud of Malayanon, in the goal of the Malaya College. Di ba, Dennis? Yeah? At it, uh, more hits, you know, is, with, uh, manamit, you know? Yeah? Ang mabulikan, na, na, sa, uh, sa, 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 Malaya College, eh, biglo, uh, mahapat kita, eh, biglo, uh, pero, pero, experience, so, so, uh, ma, ma, dalhin, ato ng, opak ng lugar, dahil, uh, the, 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 partner, Malaya, eh, is, uh, willing, oh? Uh, but, eh, uh, may bulikan, may bulikan, eh, sa, uh, pinahan, uh, Malayanon. Dahil, may tama, yeah? In, 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 uh, Malaya, uh, it's, uh, 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 but, uh, sa, uh, sa, uh, sa, uh, 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 sa lahat, sa, uh, minamik, pinagot, ito sa, uh, 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 business, uh, experience, na ito, eh, talaga dapat sa mabuno, uh, sa, uh, sa, uh, Malaya College. Sana, uh, tulung tulung tayo, para sa, kamo, buti ng, uh, Malaya College, at saka, masa, sa lahat, na, na, uh, buksan natin, na bahas sa Malayanon, is, maka, complete, sa, sa, trabaho, sa, uh, uh, dahil, na, tama, tayo, eh? Dahil, uh, Malayanon, kalibo, Malayanon, ilo-ilo, uh, dahil, uh, for tourism, uh, uh, na, na, uh, sa, uh, pre, model, management, uh, mabuno, no? No, ato ng Malayanon, tinabato, uh, uh, supervisor, manager, alus, saka, buwan, no? Malaya, sa, di mo, abinado, binado, uh, 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 Malayanon, uh, 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 para, kita man, ang malahan, uh, 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 position, sa, uh, uh, itin, uh, 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 uh. So, uh, sa, uh, Malaya College, among kita, uh, 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 mga, tali, aso, uh, biglo, mahirap, uh, sa, uh, bilang, sana, uh, sa ngayon, ang kita, uh, after, uh, three years, five years, three years, okay, uh, uh, Malayanon, uh, 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 puigin, uh, 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 yeah? But, I want, Dennis, uh, gustah, no? Uh, the, the, uh, 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 yes?
Yes. Can be allowed to relate to you as part of the Malaya College? Oh, okay, important. Uh, sa kaya, as Malaya College is, uh, you are aware, is covered, antigated by Commission High Education. So dahil, dahil, covered, eh, ng Commission High Education, uh, tanatan ang respect of the college, fast approved, uh, antigated by the commission. When I was appointed last June twenty-three, um, the time was a mission of requirements. Sa Commission High Education, it was, uh, June thirty, no? Okay, three years, it's supposed to be, every year, every time, uh, uh, request for, uh, curricular program, okay, in the college, that, uh, before June thirty, uh, sa, uh, uh. So, nasapit na to, uh, sa, uh, 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 at that time, diyan, uh, uh, or, uh, 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 the support, of course, of the technical group and, uh, Christian, uh, 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 unfortunately, tapasahan ako, no? It was subsequent to the doors by check, uh, you know, six, Manila, for further evaluation, uh, review, uh, evaluation. And we expect that document to be brought back to the art quarter, uh, 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 very, very critical, uh, 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 art quarter, regional quality assistance, eh, uh, 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 for final evaluation, very crucial. And we are subjected to comply, the requirements, everything. Malaya College is about eleven pages, no? This, uh, uh, requirements that has to be complied with. So, uh, may di, matagilip, tagilip tayo, uh, tapasahan, uh, 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 sa ngayon, uh, ako palanggin sa, uh, full-time employee of the college. And as, as I know very well, because I've been, uh, I've been teaching in management of school system and educational, uh, planning, I know very well that the requirement on the opening of the college is, eh, eh, no? Six months, one year, uh, preparation, eh, eh, uh, uh, manpower, technical experience, and sometimes backup by consultants, no? Uh, 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 besides the building, ay, um, tirahangka building, uh, uh, I must inform you that all the two contractors in the building, uh, sana, may, uh, 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 mga nagtrabaho, uh, sa second floor, hang sa first, or sa ground floor, una, two, sana, uh, 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 for your family, survival of your family, also. And, uh, 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 physical duty, uh, support facilities, is part of the overall, no? Or integral component of the school system that has to be due, no? Part of the requirement, no? Tanan, uh, Commission High Education. Uh, ano, uh, laboratory, laboratory, uh, 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 taktikang, uh, 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 restaurant, all these, uh, 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 everything. Ang, ang, bigat, uh, 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 requires, uh, technical expertise to do that work. So, ang, ang, sikwasona, uh, 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 dihanan, uh, 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 I, I sent, uh, 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 this, uh, 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 interview, uh, 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 about fifty of them, no? It's a point in here, uh, medyo, uh, 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 qualified, especially, uh, 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 almost every valley, uh, uh, ways of, uh, 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 should be, be directed to a state of excellence, uh, world-class college. Uh, 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 so, uh, 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 so, we're looking at other applicants outside of, uh, 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 outside of that. And applicants are coming from, uh, 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 from, uh, 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 so, makso, uh, 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 instructors. And, uh, applicants, uh, seriously holders, especially, uh, holders, may be found out, medyo, uh, 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 so, uh, 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 so, I suggest, uh, 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 we support, evil support of the honorable council. Uh, 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 then, uh, 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 we really have to achieve that level of superiority, or the strength of manpower, uh, 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 of the college. So, uh, 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 and with that, uh, status, uh, physically, no? Duty, support facilities, medyo, uh, 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 kasi, uh, 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 to be, uh, the pictures, uh, preparation, uh, the force descriptions, the force syllabus, and the popular instruction materials. So many things has to be written, or, uh, 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 it's deliciously, no? Well, although, uh, 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 we have the books, considering the element, uh, 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 we, we communicated to Chad before, uh, 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 until August thirty, this year, no? I, uh, 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 so, very, uh, 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 consider, uh, 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 conditions, there are many conditions. You have to complete the construction of the building, and the support facilities, the pictures must be in place. Uh, 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 so, about the problem, uh, 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 I don't know if we can create the most that we can do, especially in compliance of the requirements of the regional quality assessment thing that will be concluded, no? With the, uh, uh, soon, uh, 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 I do my work, uh, 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 just to make movie. So, uh, 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 so, give me, sir.
So, uh, 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 yes, honorable, uh?
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, 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 I understand, uh, situation, uh, 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 kumagahay, one month, but, uh, 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 situation, so, halang, suro, halang, two month, uh, 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 I know your teaching, uh, challenges, just to comply with the requirements. If there's anything we can do, from our end, I, do let us know now, para hindi ko, uh, 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 whatever you need, that we can be of help, uh, especially, uh, 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 requirements in check, that, uh, uh, kinaha ng, uh, 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 oh, mayang, eh, no? Uh, 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 I would also be asking from him, what if this situation of COVID will be carried on, uh, uh, you know, the, 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 the situation will be after next year, after next year, uh, what will be the alteration of the type of education that will operate in the school? Because, you're breaking, uh, 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 traditional, traditional teaching, and it's gonna be all, uh, 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 no face-to-face, di ba? So, if I know, um, um, uh, 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 do let us know, thank you.
Yes, thank you, honorable, uh, 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 uh,
thank you, uh, 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 to that, uh, particular concern, uh, 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 so, I suppose I can share, uh, 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 I know I can do, uh, uh. Regarding the methods, teaching learning methodology, uh, the pictures must be high, as soon as possible, so that they shall be afforded, of course, mainly for the brain, uh, to be oriented about the distance of, of learning. Sometimes it's said as, the brain is learning, the e-learning, uh, uh, flexible learning. So, that orientation, uh, 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 little bit purposeful evaluation. It's, uh, 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 asking if they are oriented about that mode of learning. So, I was at the Arkansas State University yesterday, because I am, uh, uh, touring with them, uh, Sony Insurance, uh, 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 so, really have to find the, the updated edition of the book. So, uh, 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 so, uh, 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 that, uh, 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 about how to be able to, uh, 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 uh,
Yes, honorable, uh, 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 uh,
Thank you, our honourable chair, for her decision to our key partner, uh, 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 our constituents, and of course, uh, 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 um, ina masama, uh, 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 president of, the designated president of Malaya College, by Sir Kabular. In which, uh, 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 I am proud as well to be placed, kasimario, same with you, honorable chair.
Um, I really appreciate, um, his, his effort and, um, invaluable service.
Tended as the current, uh, designated president of Malaya College, and I understand his sentiments, actually, since, as a part of the technical working group, um, those are the realities that are being faced in the establishment of the college, nga. Uh, many requirements required by Chad, honorable chair, um, and I know, nga, it cannot be done, um, without the help of a team. And, um, my, my recommendation to that is, um, maybe, um, same, I would like to second your, your motion to, uh, recommending him to, to present those, um, concerns to our mayor, so that, since our acting mayor has, uh, direct command to our departments, um, he can direct other departments if there are extra necessary help that other departments can give, honorable chair. Um, ang ako lang, uh, I want to, to comment, honorable chair, um, about the building. Um, our, uh, designated president actually mentioned about the problem of the building, in which until now, according to his report, uh, 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 so, for me, um, before, we have called the attention of the engineering, because, sanda ang assigned, sa, pag, uh, assigned to facilitate the construction, and they are the one, I believe, nga, nagfacilitate para makapili it. Um, medyo process, uh, 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 I guess that they have the, the direct, um, command on that matter, honorable chair. For me, um, we have called their attention before, and they have reported that, um, it is because of the contractor, nga, natabuan delay. Actually, if, um, with the best of my knowledge, if I could remember it right, um, the target completion is last year pa. But until now, one year had already left, but the, the building is not yet finished. And when we called their attention, the engineering department, through their representative, reported that, I think it is, um, last, uh, that, just this year, first quarter, they reported that they're going to finish the building by July twenty-twenty. And that is, um, another, ang andang, uh, because, uh, not July, but later part of June before the opening, kasi, um, dati, nagtarget kita, nga, mag-open it twenty-twenty, this twenty-twenty, but due to COVID and other, uh, mga uncontrollable circumstance, so, kita naka-open. The engineering, uh, department committed to finish it by June or first week of July. Um, basta, bi din, basta naglastune ito, basta before August, eh, ma, honorable chair. And I cannot understand why, um, what, pagyapo na, natupad ang haran, nga, commitment. And I believe, nga, since it is a requirement, the completion of building is a requirement prior to the approval of the shed for the operation of the school. I think, um, on that manner, honorable chair, um, um, we can have our effort to, to ask for an update from the engineering. Um, for me-
Uh, commendation. Pwede approve na lang? Honorable Cahillig, approve na the resolution?
Yes, sa mga kuwan malaba, bys. Okay na?
Yes, Honorable Chair, this is resolution, I move this, the approval. Resolution, uh, commending and congratulating Jose Jutindog for winning the second place in the Taalik 100 mile endurance run in the January 2020 and for being recognized as a Hall of Fame by endurance challenge Philippines introduced by Honorable Pagsugiron, Honorable Flores, and Honorable Ma Ming, and Honorable Graff. So, I move, Honorable Chair.
Second the motion for this resolution. There's a motion for this and has been seconded, no further clarification. None, this is now approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Number four, the supplemental budget of Barangay Skugon and Napaan.
Budget? Committee on Budget and Appropriation, Honorable Graff. Budget?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I move that the supplemental budget, uh, number one of Barangay Skugon and Napaan be approved in, um, um, to be, to be approved urgently.
This, so it has been seconded, the motion has, of the urgent approval has been seconded. Uh, since this, this is, uh, with regards to budget. So, motion of Honorable Graff is duly carried.
Number five, Mr. Chair. For the request of Boracay Women Producers Cooperative for an endorsement to avail of Kadiwa Ani at Kita project of the Department of Agriculture.
Mr. Refer to Committee on Agriculture.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Number six, an urgent request of Acting Mayor for an authority to sign the Conforme and Memorandum Agreement with PAS regarding hospital waste treatment.
Urgent request? Committee on Loss?
Mark, Mark Jan. Yes, Honorable Chair, this, uh, urgent request of the Acting Mayor for our authority to sign the Conforme and Memorandum of Agreement with PAS regarding hospital waste treatment. So, if there's any clarification, or, later. So, thank you, Honorable Chair, so I move.
Okay, uh, there is an inquiry, Honorable Pagsugiron, Mr. Chair.
Uh, since there's a, an urgent request from the Office of the Mayor, Mr. Chair, but I'd like to know what is this PAS regarding hospital waste treatment? Medyo di lang ako familiar kung gusto bang ano it PAS regarding hospital waste treatment.
Could you ma-explain, ma?
Since this is a memorandum agreement, uh, we would like to know also, uh, to whom that the LGU, LGU will, uh, agree upon with the...
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have here a letter from the Office of the Mayor which includes the letter from Engineer Jez Mark Yasongson and offer on healthcare waste treatment. So, if I may, Mr. Chair, we are a SEC-registered company that has been in the market for sixteen years. Our company specializes in environmental management, pollution control systems, hospital waste treatment, materials recovery facility, and solid liquid waste management systems to both public and private entities. Our technology and expertise in this field has already been tested and acknowledged by many of the environmental experts. Our company is a duly accredited hospital, medical, septic waste facility that met the stringent requirements imposed by the DNR and DOH for the safe collection, transport, treatment, and disposal of these hazardous wastes. Likewise, we are the only one duly authorized with the City Government of Ililo to collect, transport, treat, and safely dispose of all hospital and medical waste as well as septic and other hazardous waste from all establishments within its jurisdiction. After thorough study and evaluation with our experts to answer the worsening hospital waste disposal problem, we are pleased to present to you our hospital waste treatment facility, AMPAS, located in Barangay Kalahunan, Manduriya, Ililo City. Our goal is to improve overall waste disposal efficiency and more acceptable approach in hazardous waste disposal. Our main objective is to have a safe, efficient, environment-friendly waste management system in compliance with RA 749 or the Philippine Clean Air Act and the Ecological Solid Waste Management Act of 2000. In line with our main objective, we are counting to you as our partner in this endeavor thus we are pleased to submit a service proposal and quotation for your kind consideration. The offer comprises the following sections: One, healthcare waste treatment; Number two, transporting, storage, and disposal of waste; Number three, our service fee, nine hundred ninety pesos per kilogram for mainland and Katikland; Uh, one hundred pesos per kilogram for Boracay Island; and there be a minimum of three thousand kilograms per trip. For four, price is inclusive of VAT; For five, quotation is valid for thirty days. Terms: fifteen days upon receipt of the SWA, a statement of account; Seven billing cutoffs every fifteenth and thirty of the month; And number eight, subject, service fee is subject to change without prior notice. If you find everything in order, please sign Conforme below in the MOA uh, assigned by Engineer Mark Yasongson, Mr. Chair.
So, that is the proposed later?
Just a letter, Mr. Chair, plus, and, uh...
Is there already proposed MOA submitted, uh, attached in that, uh, proposed later?
The MOA is not here, attached, not yet attached, Mr. Chair. This is just a proposal, Mr. Chair.
So, that's why I, I think we need, we need to know what is the, what is the MOA? Because, uh, we already pass, uh, an ordinance, uh, although it's, uh, it's already approved here in the Sanpang Bayan that, uh, with regards to the regulations to regulate the transport usage and of waste, no? Uh, to include hazardous waste, uh, Mr. Chair. Uh, wala pa man maaprobiasa sa sanpang palalawigan. Ang, ang point ko lang, diya bi PAS regarding hospital waste, so, uh, ang pagkakilala ko kaya, pag, uh, uh, waste, hazardous waste lang, kung ayaw lang ba exclusive sa hospital, but, uh, hazardous waste is not only the hospital producing, uh, hazardous waste or special waste, but all includes other establishment also, uh... Uh, ang pamangkot ko lang kaya, kung kailangan lagba nato niya nga considered as urgent or we need to know the content of the MOA, Mr. Chair?
Uh, maybe refer na lang sa Committee on Loss, so we can...
Oo, siguro.
...check the content of the memorandum.
So, I'd like to request first, uh, the Committee Chair on Loss, if, uh... Because I'm asking for the, uh, draft MOA. Kung pwede na natin ma-kuwan ya, ma-defer na i, and, uh, if, uh, we can get a copy of the MOA and we review, and then that's the time that we will endorse the request of the Mayor. Del medyo bukon it klaro, Abi, you know? Uh, dahil, the, the, in the proposed later, there's a phase, uh, proposed. So, di na to niya, supposed to be, that's subject for, uh, a consultation hearing, no?
Uh, for me, Honorable...
I will talk only to the Mayor with regards to this also, no? But, uh, for the meantime, uh, since I'm requesting for the draft MOA, the draft MOA is not, uh, attached to the proposed later submitted to us, so, kailangan siguro na to ma-kuwan na i MOA. At least ma-review malamang.
Actually, it's very needful, Honorable Chair, ng hospital, matagal ang problema ito ng hospital natin eh. Not only for the hospital and the, another, other clinics like that. So, I think this is a privilege to us in LGU na magkaroon tayo ng ganyan. So, because of your inquiry, so, depend to the, uh, colleagues.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Na transporter, they are trans, uh, transporter and they're applying to become one of the transporter here in the Municipality of Malay. Of course, by virtue of the, siyempre signing of the MOA with the local government. Pero may waste the transporter na nag-a, nag-a, kuwan it, uh, kuwan nato for the meantime, uh, this waste the transporter is based also in Ililo, Mr. Chair. What I'm trying to request is, kung pwede na nato ma-tan o MOA, and then by next sessions, maybe we can, uh, consider for the approval of the request of the Acting Mayor, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Pagsugiron. Honorable Hope?
Thank you, Honorable Chair, for the recognition. Um, I believe, Honorable Chair, nga, since it is a memorandum agreement and, uh, we know nga there are things, we, we would like to, of course, mas gusto natin niya, mas madali nga ma-approve ang, ang endorsement to, or the authority to the Mayor, but in this time, this kind of, Honorable Chair, we have to be very, um, what do you call this? We have to first see what's inside the MOA. Kasi may ano yan, eh, may financial, financial aspect, at the same time, technical aspect. Kaya, I would support the motion, second the motion of Honorable Pagsugiron to, to refer this to, to proper committee for, uh, review, Honorable Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Hope, Honorable Lloyd.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, ako, Mr. Chair, eh, support ako sa gusto ni Honorable Dante Pagsugiron, dahil ganyan nga, wala pa kitat klaro, uh, urgent, tabi ng kuwan, tapos wala na to na klaro kung ano ang, ang MOA ito, kag, isa pa, wala pa na to nakilala ang contractor, kung ano, dapat ay, pwede nga, so, kung gusto na na model, eh, di, pwede sinakatin next session para mamangkot na to, kung kaya wala nandag, tan ako na to na andang, andang background, kung kaya nandagin magkontrak, may involved nga kilo, so, gusto mo na to, Mr. Chair, nga mausyan man atun para may idea kita, sa, dahil kung tan ako na to, may, may, dati may tabol sa puntun nga to, so, gusto ko nga, ma, saray man atun kung ano, gida ang aran ka, dahilaran, kailangan man atun, dahil ganyan nga, nakapinting nga to mga, kung sa hospital pero, siyempre maniguro magitan, Mr. Chair, nga mausyan na to kung ano ang, nakasulat ito, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you for that, uh, comment. Refer na lang sa Committee on Environment, Loss, para maclarify taang content of MOA.
Committee on Loss and Environment, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have an additional, uh...
Committee on Environment? Environment at Loss. Ha, okay, proceed, sa Committee na, sir.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, for number seven, an additional incoming referral from the Bonsill Builders, Mr. Chair, regarding the, uh, Bonsill Builders, Mr. Chair, is apply regarding the essential proposal for the construction installation of shared passive telecommunications tower infrastructure, Mr. Chair. Bonsill Builders and Supply.
Committee on Bonsill. Land use, loss, oh. Okay, Committee on Loss? Tsaka land use?
Loss and land use.
Land use.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For our committee report, Mr. Chair, the Committee on Budget and Appropriation regarding the request of the Acting Municipal Mayor to realign the amount of one million one hundred thousand intended for the purchase of emergency vehicle and one million five hundred thousand for procurement of one unit ground penetrating radar be realigned for, to the purchase of vehicle for the use of Municipal Disaster Risk Reduction and Management Office, Mr. Chair.
Committee on Budget.
Um, Mr. Chair, regarding the request of the Acting Municipal Mayor to realign the amount of one point one million intended for the purchase of emergency vehicle and one point five million for procurement of one unit ground penetrating radar to be realigned to the purchase of vehicle for the use of Municipal Disaster Risk Reduction and Management Office. Um... So, the total amount is, uh, two point six million, Mr. Chair. So, that, that will be, that, okay, thank you. That, um, will be realigned to purchase the vehicle for the use of Municipal Risk Reduction, um, and Management Office, Mr. Chair. So, I have here a resolution prepared. Uh, this, this will be used for the LSIs and the COVID response of the Municipalty of Malay requires, because it requires a dedicated transportation service in order to mitigate the spread of the disease and further protect the personnel of the local government unit of Malay. And as I understand, Mr. Chair, right now, we are using the ambulance and, uh, our other vehicles, uh, to pick up the LSIs, uh, even when they get off the bus or, no, when they get off the boats, and this vehicle will also be used by our, the patients, uh, not COVID patients, but, uh, and, and our, of course, our, um, uh, people, no, working in the MDRMO. Um, so, I, I move to approve the request of the Acting Municipal Mayor to realign the budget for, uh, for the use of, um, MDRMO for their purchase of, um, vehicle dedicated to LSIs and COVID nineteen. So, may I request my colleagues here to approve it in urgency?
There's a motion for the urgent approval of the request of the Acting Mayor to, for the realignment of, uh, budget. Uh, it's been seconded, by Honorable Hope. Any more further clarification? So, this with regards to the use of vehicle for emergency, so I think there's no need for further discussion. So, this is duly carried.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, and the Committee Report of the Trans, uh, Committee Transportation.
Honorable Sungdad?
Mr. Chair, I move to endorse the ANB under my committee, um, uh, to be calendared on second reading.
There's a motion for this approval of the resolution, has been seconded. No further clarification? So, the motion of Honorable Sungdad is duly carried.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Number nine, for the Committee on Land Use on request for it's endorsement of the following.
Honorable Danny de Los Santos?
Delisop Apikan for approval of SB endorsement. Number one, Bun Gerald Martinez, City Wagdan, proposed three story nine rooms commercial building subject for penalty. Cedric Sason Brabag as but of three story post top room one conference room and office building with drop deck, subject for penalty. Lilian Medina City Ambisaan proposed two story member of church of, of God international building with drop deck, no penalty. Antonio Serian Gonzalez City Ambulong proposed four story thirty-five rooms commercial building with drop deck, no penalty. Robinson Taborda, Barangay Katiklan, unit one as but of one story commercial building with attic store on ground floor. Unit two as but of two story commercial building store on ground floor, subject for penalty. Dayan Agalo Barangay Katiklan as but of one story commercial building, or, subject for penalty. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable de Los Santos.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for second reading. Number one, an ordinance creating the municipal environment and natural resources, Menro, the local government unit of Malayaklan as introduced by Honorable Mayor Nae Graff.
Honorable Graff?
For second reading, Mr. Chair. An ordinance creating the Menro of the LGU, Mr. Chair.
I move that the ordinance creating the municipal environment and natural resources office or Menro of the local government unit of Malayaklan, uh, be approved for...
Second reading.
Second and, uh, final reading.
Second reading lang.
Ah, fourth, fourth, third of our reading, I'm sorry. Any second?
Uh, then, yes, Honorable Pagsugiron?
Any clarification?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, to us, the, uh, sponsor of this, uh, proposal, Honorable. Um, we are creating municipal environment and natural resources office uh, sa section two, qualification show the Menro powers, duties, and functions. Uh, may I identify, supposed to be because, uh, may, may ato rin nga existing, uh, kuwan, Menro?
Menro Officer.
Oo, si, si Aning.
Oo.
Uh, si Aning is recommending, gina-recommend na Aning hayang na position.
We have to create the office first, also.
Okay, so, okay. So, i-create na to ng office, so, para kay Aning. Office na para kay Aning niya.
Oo, I mean, Aning is already designated as a Menro Officer, pero uwa kitat office.
Hmm, so that's why we, we create...
Actually, gina-require kita, every municipality dapat may Menro Office.
Exactly, oo. So, create that office, and then para sa, kay Aning.
Sa Menro Officer.
Sa Menro Officer, okay, uh... Actually, everything is clear here, Mr. Chair, no? Aga, I also agree for the creation of this office dahil ang Menro abi, ay, supposed to be, bulbahol abi, an ang scopes kaya ang functions, so dapat there will be is separate office nga, na ka-assigned uh, when it comes sa mga, in, sa protection and preservation of the, of our environment.
See, actually, si Miss Aning, mas a designated, gat imoran nga, Menro Officer. So, ang position as a Menro, ay, applyan gapon.
Yeah, but, under this kuwan abi, mga requirements, eh, may mga medyo mabugat ang requirements, no? So, kailangan ay, mausay gigit at qualified. Okay, anyway, uh, sige lang, uh, ako napakulang man abi, kung, ay, yes, kaya, in preparation sa kuwan kay Aning.
Oo.
Because I would like to ask, uh, if she is, uh, qualified under the requirements.
Applyan man gapon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Pagsugiron. Any more clarification? The proposed ordinance? So, I think there's none?
Uh, I move that the ordinance creating the municipal environmental and national resources office uh, be approved for second reading and be calendared for the third and final reading.
Okay, there's, there's a motion and it's already been clarified? So, there's now approved for second reading and for approval on the third reading?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Number two, an ordinance regulating the hanging of laundry and fences or walls along the streets and highways, including advertisements, posters in the Municipalty of Malay as introduced by Honorable Graff.
Um, Mr. Chair, I move that the ordinance regulating the hanging of laundry on fences or walls along streets and highways, including advertisements, posters in the Municipalty of Malay be approved for sec, uh, for second reading and be calendared for third and final reading. Is there, is the, unless, or is a clarification?
Clarification, Honorable Pagsugiron, is recognized.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Section two of this proposed, uh, ordinance, uh, regulations, uh, or prohibitions sa advertising abi, there's already an existing ordinance, uh, no, uh, supramissional posters, and, uh, it was mentioned about liquor brands, other commercial products. So, I, I, I don't know if we are repailing the existing ordinance on advert, uh, installation of posters, no? The existing, uh, as far as I, uh, understand, no? That there's already existing ordinance on the, uh, some of posters, advertising materials, and, uh, we are charging for that, no? Uh, fee, with a fee.
Okay, okay, uh, to be specific, uh, um, SB Dante, no? I'm, the advertisements I'm referring to are those, uh, remember, if you're a basari-sari store here, so they deliver whatever goods they deliver, and suddenly, without asking any permission, tugudug, 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 and then you find your, your, uh, the surrounding of that stores full of posters, which have not paid one cent tabo to the, to the Municipalty of Malay, but they, they became, uh, an eyesore, you know? Uh, diba? Imo ako makita, tan ako kabagas tindahan, bukod pula puno, ano ma...
It's not a prohibition, pero kailangan i-apply nanda. Dahilang, as far as kuwan abi, may mga limitations on the installations or putting up of advertising materials or posters, pero ay, kailangan gina-apply.
Oo, may gina-apply, na dapat.
Apply sa LGU for a permit, no?
Oo, para masayro nandapat eh, kundi yun, sana pwidi magbutang. And not just put anything around the stores, punupuno ran, tanan nga advertisement dyan na kadukot. Diba? May mga tandway, may ano dyan, punupuno ran, San Miguel, uh, tanan nga products na ginabaligya, o ginadeliver nanda, kadagasa na posters, diba? Ginapuno, tugod pa nga amat, mga bainte, man makita dyan, nga uwa man, panginutan na mo, ang tagiya tindan, ilaman na isbiwa kamikside, sino nung takudtan? Manabagatan?
Uh, that's, uh, that is, uh...
Oo, basura in the end, for us.
That is exactly prohibited, no? Uh, dahil what, permit, but as long as there is a permit, so we cannot prohibit.
And there's a permit, diba? There is a certain, uh, specification, itana nga, nga size, diba? Uh, ang area nga ginabutang ano na, dapat, bukod manatang nga...
So, pwidi na to, sino may include dyan, Honorable Graff, na sa prohibitions, as long as nga may permits ta, so pwidi si grow, as long as may permits.
Oo, o, to sana matama, sa sambilog nga, ma-apply ano is sana.
Apply, of course.
Oo, bat na, fill up the, tanan nga makita nandang walls, tanan nga makita nandang fence, butangan nanda.
Di, may, supposed to be may mga designated area.
No, ni, in, in the other ordinance nga, gina-regulate ang pagbutang it posters, may designated, may, may mga ano to eh, mas titalito, pero I'm, I'm, what, uh, what is being addressed here? Are the, uh, company, companies nga, ang andang mga delivery or andang mga distributor or dealers, ay, ang instruction ang sana, ay, post, 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 anywhere, any vacant area. Uh, and, and it's not easy to follow them also, no?
Ang kasi, kabi, basta, what permit, say, any type of advertising materials that is installed everywhere, and the, especially in dahilan ng Boracay, ay, gina-pamo ulgit man ti imoran eh, no? Ag, siyempre pag nag-apply ka abi, there's specific ang numbers, kailangan ay applying one hundred pieces of hayang na posters, so, okay, matan as long as you pay, no, sa kuwan, oh. Okay, ang sa ako lang kaya, si Gro medyo, recommend ko lang, as, uh, consider binato, sana nga illegal tanan pagpost... As uh consider binatun sana nga illegal tanan pagpost, bisan sa D N, nga was not permits. But, but do so, applied for a permit, simple permissible manti mo, ag, and, and the designated area.
And, and my date, ang pagtakud nanda, anong pizza nandang kuwan, manabagatan.
May kuwan ano, uh period of lima, three days, so.
But there also, you have to remember, there are also mga events sa hotels or restaurants or ano, basta lang sa nagpaguwait ng tarpulin, actually, ngawa man ga nga ong saton. Isgaran sa mga ano, tas aywanan lang dyan, hanginan, may maguba ang tarpulin, kita dahil mahimos.
Hmm, exact.
So imoran ng isga sa mga uh importanti nga, imo nga hindi sana pwidi katakod it poster kundi hindi in yang isgaran sa ginabaway naton. For uh saton matang ano, hindi man bala la inigo, tanawan ang palibot it atong isla.
Uh sa, sa kuwan, hanging of laundry on fences, so tanan nga klase nga kalsada.
Oo, as long as it's a, sa primary, secondary roads.
Basta tanan nga kuwan, na kalsada nga, along di kuwan.
Oo, prime, uh, oo, along nga ginagyan it, vehicles ginagyan it, hindi pwidi ka magtakod sa-
Paano kontot na dingbutang si ruptat mga sa three story, four story buildings?
I think uh we already, we are already, we've already uh ano here, um ang kudano ang, ang bawal, fence and walls.
Okay.
So we're talking about ang kahos kapantay ang bawal, hindi ka gatang dahagos masyado, no?
For clarification.
And that is you suggest na up to second floor bawal naton.
And eh, clarification lang man, dahil basic kuwan ko ang bala, uh at the specific manti mo sa fence eh.
Oo.
Oo, galing hay rupta pa may fence man.
Ang aton malang ay, if you, even, even here, no? If you enter the publasyon, pagtabok mo tulay, ay gabandira, unjan ang mga binugad sa
Sumenland and Boracay.
Yo, ah the whole municipality of Malaya.
So kuwan lang si gro, uh what they are saying sa dyan, mga basta illegal posters, no? Uh actually, gina-check man itato mga lo impors uh, limporsere, kuwan, haran kuwan. Kuwan what that permits, remove it, ma-mamantang kuwan.
Ay, kung mapai lang man ang, ang tagayatindahan, ay makiside sino nung takud eh.
Basta bukod tatang na tindahan nga kuwan, pero kung may signboard na tindahan.
Actually, in uh, if, if ano, no, if I, uh when I was uh barangay captain of Butag, if you notice, in barangay Butag, you'll never see posters. You'll never see laundry, dyan, dahil ang amon, pagka, pagka ikaw tindahan actually, dyan sa tindahan mo, within your store, dyan na ikaw pwidi magatakod it. It daan nga mga, pwidi sa nakatakod posters dyan, no, trabawag, once nga gumawa sa front itindahan hindi pwidi kuwan dahil basura utang gumarantan.
Sige, ang kuwan ko lang man basta at least eh, daywa mo lang, ang perception ko is uh basta may, basta may permits.
Payan sana.
Permissible, pero no permits, illegal.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So so with that, uh, Mr. Chair, I'd like to move that this ordinance regulating the hanging of laundry and fences, on fences or walls along the streets and highways uh including advertisement, posters indiscriminately, tabehan, no? Uh posted in uh, on walls and fences in the municipality of Malaya be approved for second reading and calendared for the third and final reading, Mr. Chair.
So there's a motion for this approval and it has already been clarified. Uh so this now approve on second reading and this is for the final reading on the third.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Number three, for second reading, an ordinance uh increasing the environmental fee for all visitors and guests bound for Boracay Island, Municipalty of Malayaklan as introduced by honorable Mayden A. Graf.
Um actually, Mr. Chair, this ordinance uh was already approved in uh this plenary, no? But um had to withdraw it from the Sanggoyeng Panaluwigan for refinement. And uh the refinement uh was already done. And uh uh will this go through the process again that uh it? So I move that this ordinance increasing the environmental fee for all visitors and guests bound for Boracay Island, Municipalty of Malayaklan be uh be approved uh for second reading and um, Mr. Chair. Calendared for third and final reading.
Be open for finality?
Uh open for discussion or no more?
Any more inquiries?
So according to, according to our uh Sanggoyeng Bayan and the Liga President uh sorry, Sanggoyeng Baya, Liga President here is uh nagsecond duma, Mr. Chair, sa motion, he seconded the motion.
There's an motion for this ordinance for our increased environmental fee has been seconded. So since there are no more clarifications, this is approved for second reading and for the final approval on the third reading.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Number four, Mr. Chair, a resolution urging the acting municipal mayor for Baris Bautista to assign a dedicated environmental officer to, to be based in Boracay Island to monitor, implement the municipal ordinances on the protection and preservation of the environment as introduced by honorable Graf, Mr. Chair.
Any clarification?
Any inquiry, honorable Pagsugiran is recognized.
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh only one, uh it's not a clarification spot, it's an observations. No, uh sa section two, increase and the imposition of environmental fee. Uh may
Niko?
No, no.
I think uh tapos na kita dyan.
Ha, ang sa ano to, sa environmental.
We are the, on the, on the resolution.
Environmental officer.
Ah, abi ko sa environment, may ako na kinatso, aprovente ya?
Oo, gins second duta ni.
Ah, okay, medyo nakakwan abi ko eh, uh ang ako na, uh Mr. Chair. Uh kuwan lang ha, at least kung may approval dun, medyo ako lang try nga i-er-erases. Basic magboherman bala ya, to sa isbi. Ang nang Malayanon Residence Man, that's another.
Sa andaran, Mr. Chair, kung hindi nang nagiapprove gapon.
Uh that's why uh we are in a hurry for the approval of this.
We believe abing uh there is no uh law nga gina, gina-biulate naton, uh uwa kitat gina-
Uwa manan, dahil ang, ang kuwan ko eh is approval, dahil even the, I think the acting mayor mentions that for the meantime nga kung pwidi lang yun natan, skip lang yun natan ya para pwidi approve, immediate approval, dahil mo ya ang malaging controversial.
I also, I also express my ano kay mayor nga, if, if for the last time, they will not approve, eh, oh.
Yeah, for the permission of honorable, Mr. Chair, thank you, Mr. Chair. For the permission of honorable Pagsugiran, uh the, the Sanggoyen is uh uh the condemning of damakato dating that resolution because of, akala nila lahat akala niya pati panday, workers, suppliers, ay include, yun pala, pagrepay natin yung local tourist na, na hindi nagtatrabaho sa Boracay, yun ang, ano, kaya okay naman sa kanila.
Oo.
Kasi do-dun tayo, pag-submit kasi ng resolution, yung pag-submit natin, hindi kasi nadepay doon kung sino yung pwidi o hindi pwidi, di ba? Kasi na copyo sila, dahil akala niya lahat ng taga doon sa kanila is, sisingilin ang pagdumaan, sisingilin. Ngayon, okay naman, pagwork it, um liburir, contractors or suppliers, pagtaga doon, laklano, hindi naman sa visitors.
Oo.
Yan lang.
Thank you, uh Liga President, um Rani.
Okay na.
So, I-
Sa resolution eh, honorable.
Uh again, for the resolution urging the municipal mayor for Baris Bautista to assign a dedicated environmental officer to be based in Boracay Island to monitor and implement the municipal ordinances on the protection and preservation of the environment. Uh it's now need second reading and uh I move to approve. I move uh to approve uh that it be calendared for third reading, third and final reading, Mr. Chair.
Before we approve, may clarification pa sa resolution?
Any clarification?
Clarification.
For the environmental officer? Oo, I think uh-
Wala na clarification? Second, cap, second?
Oh.
So this is, motion? Okay, resolution, so this is now approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Number five, a resolution approving augmentation of appropriation for security services and other general services of the municipal environment and natural resources office in the amount of seven hundred fifty six thousand to be taken from other environmental programs of the same office, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Mr. Chair, the resolution, um uh approving the augmentation of appropriation for security services and other general services of the municipal environment and natural resources office in the total amount of seven hundred fifty six thousand to be taken from other environmental programs of the same office. It's now open for clarification?
Are there any clarification for this? Number seven, it ano?
Six, number six, Mr. Chair.
Huh?
Six, number five, number five.
Ah, number five.
Augmentation?
Augmentation, Mr. Chair, yes.
Okay.
Any clarification? Wala na? Before we approve, so wala na?
I move for the approval of the resolution for third and uh
For second reading.
Final reading.
Third?
Second, approve ng today.
There's a motion for the approval and has been seconded and since there's no further clarification, this is now approved.
Um, okay, so since this uh, there's also an urgency in this uh augmentation, no? Uh I move to approve the approval of this, I move to approve this augmentation of operation for security services and other general services of the municipal environment and natural resources office in the total amount of seven fifty six to be taken from the environmental, environment, uh program of the same office.
Are there any clarifications for the motion of honorable Graf before we approve? Wala na, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Seconded, so this is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Number six, for second reading, Mr. Chair, a resolution approving barangay ordinance number four series of twenty nineteen of barangay Naasok, an ordinance prohibiting the pasturing of cattle, including other grazing animals along barangay roads and within the government premises of pub, or public places within the jurisdiction of barangay Naasok Malayaklan. An imposing penalties thereof, Mr. Chair.
Committee on Laws and Ordinances.
Resolution, Honorable Chair, for the approving of the barangay ordinance number four, series of twenty nineteen of barangay Naasok, an ordinance prohibiting the pasturing of of cattle, including other grazing animals along barangay roads and within the government premises of public places with the jurisdiction of barangay Naasok Malayaklan, an imposing penalties be approved on second and final reading.
Any further clarification with the motion of honorable Kahilig? Before we approve? Wala na? Second?
Second.
So this approved?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Number seven, uh resolution endorsing the application of TPW Group Incorporated to the Department of Transportation through the Land Transportation Office Region Six to operate a private emission testing center at LTU Malay Extension Office located at barangay Katiklan, Malayaklan, as introduced by honorable Iki Kahilig, Mr. Chair.
Honorable Kahilig, may take the floor.
With regards to the qualification, Honorable Chair, to applying the uh emission testing center in locality, so they need for the endorsement from the LGO. So with that, Honorable Chair, uh resolution endorsing the application of TPW Group Incorporated to the Department of Transportation through the Land Transportation Office Region Six to operate a private emission testing center at LTU Malay Extension Office located barangay Katiklan, Malayaklan be approved for second and final reading.
There's a motion for, and has been seconded, any more further clarification with regards to the endorsement of the application of TPW Group? Wala na? The motion of honorable Kahilig is carried.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for third and final reading. Number one, an ordinance regulating the transport, storage, sale and disposal of coconut fruits, young and old, in Boracay Island part of the municipality of Malaya and providing penalties for violation thereof, as introduced by honorable Dante Pagsugiran.
Okay, since we are on the third reading, so there's no need for further discussion, move for the approval, honorable.
Thank you, Honorable Chair, an ordinance regulating the transport, storage, sale and disposal of coconut fruits, young and old in Boracay Islands part of the municipality of Malaya and providing penalties for violation thereof, introduced by honorable Dante Pagsugiran. Move to approve for the third and final reading.
There's a motion for the approval of the ordinance with the regulation of the transport, storage, sales and disposal of coconut fruits in Boracay Island, part of the municipality of Malaya, providing penalties for violation thereof, introduced by honorable Dante Pagsugiran. Has been seconded by honorable Graf, and we are on the third reading, so this is now approved for third and final reading. Aside business?
We have no unaside business, Mr. Chair.
Other matters?
No other matters?
Other matters, colleague, wala, uh announcements?
None, Mr. Chair, uh except for the, we have uh free vaccination gali, Mr. Chair. Uh for the LGO officials and employees for uh anti-flu, yes, Mr. Chair.
Flu vaccination?
It's for one week, siguro, open now, yes, anti-flu.
Where's the venue?
It is mainland, yes, oh, to siguro sa pan.
And there, I see.
Uh manday na next week sa sunod, oh.
Whole day?
Over, 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 five days.
Uh, 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 Mr. Chair, let's acknowledge the each of you, may araso ang pan, an ang announcement?
Ma'ndinki?
Ma'ndinki.
Uh, this is the program of the, of the LCU Malaya now in support of our pandemic. So the, through the budget of the human resource, sa ating health and wellness program, we allocated um two hundred twenty-six vaccine, eh, purchase na don, or supposed to be, it should be covered by all but then he priority ano namon ang permanent employee and then the officials. So yesterday, we discussed with ato na medical officer, three, the doctor of Madami uh she will request, you know, sa uh provincial, provincial, P H O, provincial health office nga ma-request ang LCU Malaya for the additional uh free vaccine from the Department of Health. So hopefully, uh ma-cover naton ang tenan nga employee from uh up to the job order employee of the LCU Malaya. So initially, we have two hundred twenty-six vaccine available uh this time. So it was requested nga, ang schedule of the vaccination is morning para kuno in case of mamonitor ang situation sa afternoon, just in case may mga uh effect. So ang may mga allergy and then high, mataasan ang blood pressure, so hinamonitor ano ibago naton iyan ang vaccine, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Dry flu vaccine. Announcements, where is that?
I have no more announcements, Mr. Chair.
So since there are no unaside business, no other matters, and no announcement, so any move for the adjournment of our twenty-fifth regular session?
Uh, Mr. Chair. Since the, no more announcement, uh I move for the adjournment of the uh, ang pinada, fifties, fifty-fourth uh fifty-fifth uh regular session.
There's a motion for the adjournment of our twenty-fifth regular session has been seconded, so this is approved.
There's a motion for the adjournment of our twenty-fifth regular session has been seconded, so this is approved.